It just seemed to me that to talk, present for 25 minutes really says there isn't any time to talk about it.
And we recognize that.
But what I really wanted to talk about is in the, Angela, I've got this too, is the two articles in the, and I have copies of the old one, in the New York Review of Books by Diane Ravitch. And the first one was a very positive one about Finnish lessons. And I don't know whether any of you had a chance to read that, but I've read it a number of times now, and I keep thinking about how insulting we are to our teachers. You'll take this test, and if you don't have so many multiple choice answers right, you're going to get fired. And too many of our teachers haven't had as much background in mathematics, particularly, in elementary school teachers, as they should have. And so we tend to say, put out threatening kinds of signals to them rather than supportive signals to them. And I thought that was the important thing about that. The second article, which is not so interesting to me, is Teach for America. Isn't that what it says down in somewhere here?
Yeah, where did you talk about?
And my daughter supports Teach for America, apparently. So she wasn't thrilled to hear, read this article. But I think the idea that I have from the combination of is, I'm not interested in short-term people. Teach for America, you go in for two years and then you decide to leave, and 50 percent of their people leave. I think we want to have people who've been here 10 years, 15 years. You can't, you can't teach the same school system and the same program if you don't have experienced teachers who've been around. And they smell a rat when the rat should be smelled, and they smell somebody who's going to set a rocket to the moon for us when those people appear. And so I think these two articles sort of go together and ask the school committee, I mean, we're talking about finances on ad nauseam, and not curriculum policy so much. But my feeling is we want to encourage teachers to take on things and learn more stuff and be more confident that their positions are held and that they are appreciated. And the way to really do things is to get kids excited about your subject matter. And so the thing that, I will be having a conversation with Dr. Kerbel and Angela Vick about a proposal. I would like to get a bank to pay the teachers to come. And I'd like to put on a workshop. They're not committed to it because I haven't had a chance to discuss it with them. We're scheduled for after the vacation. But my feeling is that our elementary school teachers need to be, need to know more mathematics and be more confident in mathematics. So when something, when a kid comes up and says XYZ, the teacher can see in it an element of truth that can be pulled out and make a lesson out of it. And for instance, my grandson's seven, and I use Guisner rods, and he started making, instead of just making stair steps with a single one, he made them with two rods. And we got up to nine, and I said, well, you got, how many rods have you got in there? Well, there's nine, there's, no, but you got two of every one of them. Well, count, he can count, two, four, six, eight. And he got up to, two times nine, that's going to be 18. Ha! He created the lesson. And I, but I'm confident and comfortable playing math games. I have a little 10-year-old in Salisbury, and she, you know, I could ask her, simplify the square root of 50. That's no problem. She knows that the root of the product's a product of the root. She recognizes the squares, 25, that's there, and so it's root 25 times 2, which is square root of 25 times square root of 2, which is five root 2.
I knew that.
Yeah, right, Val.
No.
So.
I didn't want to show off.
No.
So, so, so I know that there are a lot of patterns that kids learn and enjoy learning and get excited about. But too often, the teachers are being beaten up by, take the, get your kids to prepare for this exam or else, kind of attitude. And they aren't given a proper training before going into the classroom to really teach mathematics in an open, comfortable way. And so my interest is in helping the elementary school teachers, particularly first and second grade. My seven-year-old can, can count by sixes to sixties. So he's already learning, he doesn't know he's learning the multiplication table, but he is. He just thinks he's counting. So those are the kinds of questions that I'd like to raise with the school committee. How can we support Dr. Kerbel, Angela Vick, who I know want to have strong programs in the elementary schools, particularly in math? Math is a door opener. But if you can't open that door, it's going to slam a lot of things in your face. So I, thank you for listening. I love you, Hupash.
I know.
I do. I work with kids. I love Hupash.
It gets to us all.
I think one of the things that's been really interesting, we've been really involved, Steve and Mark and I, Cheryl in particular, as well as the administrators have been really involved in how this new evaluation system for teachers and principals and superintendents is going to be implemented. And I think, I can see in what they're doing that two, three, four, five years down the road, the paradigm is going to be shifted on what, what really constitutes student progress and how are we measuring the effectiveness of teacher in terms of student progress? That's really shifting, you know, that, that, that the system first off requires us to look at student achievement and achievement growth levels rather than this sort of linear progress, every year they're improving in their scores. The other thing is that part of the way teachers are going to be evaluated are going to be on evaluation systems that we develop here in our school system. That they're going to be external standardized systems, but there's also going to be an interim system to really look at measuring teacher effectiveness and impact on the growth, student growth. And it's been really interesting that, you know, this could go, this could have gone south very quickly with every union slamming down at the table saying, we're not going this way, this isn't going to happen. It's not what's happening across the state, and that's not where our experience is here, that we are really entering into this partnership. And I had mentioned at the negotiation, the first contract that I ever negotiated with teachers, my major breakpoint was an alternative evaluation system. We didn't even define it, just, just put it as a voluntary alternative evaluation system. And we got it in that contract. And essentially it said, you sit down with your supervisor and you design it. And if it's okay for the supervisor, that's fine, whatever you want, however. And the first, I know the first four years, there wasn't a single teacher who was encouraged to do it. None of them did. But now, you know, they've begun to look at some of these alternative ways of being evaluated, and they're discovering that they're really significant, they're really meaningful, they're really able to show what it is they've learned and what it is they can do in ways that the traditional evaluation hasn't. So that's really, you know, and I have to keep reminding myself that, that this is about changing culture. Changing culture on so many levels, change of culture on how the state looks at it meets, how it meets the Fed's requirements, and how we look like how we meet the state, and then how we ourselves make things happen. So it's, boy, it's a lot of work, but it's the only work we can do. So I'm encouraged, I wish I could say it was happening tomorrow. It's not, but there really is a change. And I've been doing this, you know, I got my undergraduate degree in special education right since '76, and I've been at this a long time. And I'm really seeing something very fundamental, very significant change in our schools and in, and at the state level as well. I'm encouraged, I wish it was happening faster, is that radical pragmatism maybe. Pragmatism is what really works, and radical pragmatism, let's do it now if we know it works.
But I also see in the younger grades, and Angela, maybe you can help me, but, and I don't mean to use the term derogatorily, but I see in classrooms, teachers much more comfortable wanting kids to muck around in math. It's, you know, it's a balance between sort of a program approach and a discovery approach. And I guess during this whole budget season, one of the things that's impressed me, going from building to building, is to see actually what the children are exposed to, all the way from the preschool class. I was astounded at some of the things, you know, kind of the rigor of, of the new preschool model. And then we went into, you know, kindergarten class, and, you know, that teaching, the kids were doing journals, you know, science journals, they have a rotted pumpkin, and, you know, eventually what'll happen, as the teacher says, the pumpkin will regrow, but the kids are writing in their, you know, in a science journal. You know, so I, I think it's tied, and I don't mean to look at you as science, but, you know.
No, what I'm, you know.
No.
That's good, observation.
But I think that, that, you know, that discovery approach as a, as a teacher, you have to encourage it to happen, and you have to feel comfortable that you may not know all the answers all the time. And one of these times, this child's going to come up with something that's going to blow you away, and it's happened to me, I'll say, I have to get back to you on that, you know? And then I go seek out some other counselor or whatever. So, you know, it is the evaluation system, but, but I see more, more of a discovery approach happening in education, you know, and some of it's a guided approach to that discovery. You know, these are the teachers set out certain materials and hope certain things happen, and, you know, maybe when they do happen, that's great, and they encourage other children in the classroom. And if it doesn't happen from the, from the child point of view, then the teacher guides more. So, you know, it's kind of guided discovery. So to me, what's happening in our classrooms, particularly, I think, in math and science, you know, in, in the younger grades, is, is a real leap forward from what you're talking about. And I'm hoping that's true. You know, we're allowing the mucking around, the kids are discovering, we're challenging them more from the very beginning. I don't mean to put you on the spot either, I do, I do.
No, I think that that is true. I think the other thing is, you know, there's great hope in the new Common Core standards. New Common Core standards have really pushed rigor back about one year, so ramping it up, I mean. So, you know, what was expected in fourth grade is now expected in third, and in third, and in second. We saw that go right back to kindergarten, particularly in the area of math, for the early years. Because I think it was recognized that perhaps for a period of time, we took a more holistic approach to mathematics instruction in the really early years, and it didn't have enough rigor as far as the, the math goes. So I think, you know, when we look at the Common Core, I think there's great hope in that. I think that for a public school teacher, the Common Core is their contract. You know, it's a contract that they've got, that they have to abide by. And so we have to support them in being able to do that. I think that a lot of the work that we've done with Dr. Chen has really been all about that. You know, Dr. Chen says, you know you've arrived as a math teacher if the only materials you need is a stick and sand. So, you know, I mean, so there, I think there are, I think we're really trying to help our teachers come to a point where they feel, where they feel more competent in their content knowledge, where they feel more capable to let the children discover and know that they can help them travel the journey that they're on. And also, at the same time, balance the expectation for what they are going to do as well. So, you know, you want to, you want, there has to be a balance between what that support is and setting expectations that are high enough that the teachers meet them, and then the teachers promote those with their students. And, and so that's, you know, that's always an ongoing challenge, and something we're always working towards so that we can address the needs of all the learners. Because I know I've heard you speak of that many times, that, you know, you've got a continuum of learners in our classrooms, and you've got to be able to address the needs of all of the way we're working.
Well, go ahead.
I want to go back to a key point that you made, which I think needs to be a part of all this, and I think it is encouraging important teachers in their professional development and putting those rewards in a contract. And some of them are difficult because they're not quantitative, and it used to be that people would get raises based on, probably still, based on the courses that they take. And, you know, maybe people were running around with two master's degrees and they're just taking courses to get, to basically be recognized and compensated. But in fact, sometimes I think it actually takes away from what they're really doing in the classroom and developing as teachers. And I think it will be really, I know it's hard, once again, it's that one, it's hard. But I think it would be nice if we could sort through that, professionals and the teachers, because we really do have some of the main features, we're very fortunate, but they don't always get recognition.
I think that's one of the, one of the things that we've looked at, and we've talked about on a couple of occasions, and really have, how it developed, and really, it's a whole question of how do you institutionalize recognition for creativity, for new approaches, for thinking outside the box in terms of your approach in teaching and the things that you're doing with the students who are very good at recognizing, oh, yep, you got another three courses under your belt, you know, good girl, pat on the head, hmm. But, you know, how do we, how do we institutionalize the creativity, the, the working within the standards in such a way that those standards become not only checkmarks on the checklist, but truly relevant learning for the kids? And that's, there's a big difference, and some of our teachers do that very well. But how do we recognize and institutionalize that recognition?
Well, I think that the evaluation system has a predictive mechanism for that. It's very, very interesting. We haven't even begun to sort of unpack that, but I think that's where, that's where we're going to be able to touch on what Nick is saying, what you're saying. We've agreed here that based on the, the level of rigor that is required to be a proficient teacher, that's what we're focusing on here. The theory is that your exemplary teachers are, become your leaders, become those, if a teacher is an exemplary teacher, they, they are so far ahead that they mentor everybody else. And I think that, that offers some promise to us, that we can both identify and in some way incentivize exemplary teachers, that, that any school system is going to be lucky to have a half a dozen, a dozen of them. But they are so clearly beyond proficient that they can serve as, as models really for others. And it might get at what you're talking at, that, that the theory is that if you've got a system full of proficient teachers, you've got, you've got a tremendous system. Because proficiency now is so clearly defined by the rubrics and really rigorous. So I, so I think that that offers some hope.
I think another thing I just wanted to add about our, our teachers and their professional development, I, you know, as the person who approves course, course proposals, I'm always really impressed with the responsibility our teachers take around the kinds of courses that, that they're taking. You know, part of what we do in the district is, before a teacher takes a graduate course, they submit for approval of that course. They're very responsible in saying, I know this might be on the cusp, and they'll send a rationale around what this is going to do to improve their practice for fear that maybe at a first glance, I might look at it and say, I don't know, you know, you're, you're a science teacher, I don't understand why, you know, you may want to take this course. They, they're pretty reflective about the courses that they take. We still are living in a system where they move, you know, that's how they can move across their salary schedule. And so, you know, people do take a lot of classes, but they're pretty responsible about aligning those classes to their practice and taking things that are really going to enhance what they do. So I just want to reassure you of that, because I have the great privilege of approving all of those proposals as they come through, so.
Okay. I'd like to add to that. Okay? And that, I know it wasn't your attention, the way you came up.
Well, I actually was quoting a teacher when I said that, by the way. I hadn't been up on my own.
I, I, I put a lot of stock in advanced degrees.
I do too, why not?
And, and I think that, you know, and you like to think that when people take, when teachers take courses or they're involved in programs, they're getting the kind of academic rigor so that they come, they transfer whatever they learn back into the classroom.
But I think it doesn't always, and I think it's really served as a proxy. It was an easy proxy that developed as part of a contractual bargaining process. It makes sense, I think it's good, I mean, I, but I just don't think it always measures what people really need.
There's certain things that, you know, teachers need for advancement that might not be available in a course per se.
Right.
And, you know, when, when we take a look at the resources, it's not only the money, it's also the time. The time the teachers have to collaborate with each other for common planning or whatever it might be, to learn from each other. That, to me, is probably the, the biggest impact on, on best practices is what you learn from your peers. And how are we supporting that? Are we getting that, the time? I know every year when we talk about the half-days, it comes up.
I was just going to say, you're the greatest self for the half-days.
Again, I apologize for showing up late, not knowing what the topic of the public conversation was or what it even is, but I, what I'm listening to, it seemed to center around the teachers, and so it's like anything else. I personally don't agree that an advanced degree necessarily means anything. It's what you do with it. So you're probably going to think it's strange to hear this from me, but I think you need to have, in anything we do, assessments. So if I say I'm going to take this course, and I write up for Ms. Vick what I'm going to do from that course, then you have an obligation to make an assessment as to whether that in fact happened. And that's wherein, I think, the objectivity is really important. So there has to be an assessment of what the individual teacher is doing with whatever knowledge they have, whatever courses they take, whatever advanced degrees they have, and whatever professional development. And certainly peer-to-peer professional development doesn't usually cost you a dime. But, you know, having been someone who has been mentored and a mentor, one of the most difficult things for that kind of relationship is finding a necessary time to make that meaningful. That's the very critical factor.
I'd like to call to order the reading of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, April 2nd, 2012. Mrs. Kennedy, would you kindly call the roll?
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mr. DeCoel.
Here.
Ms. Remy.
President.
Mayor Holligan.
President.
Mr. DeCannon.
Here.
Ms. Conde.
Here.
Mr. Keown.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Could we please stand to adjourn the panel?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
The admission statement of the Newburyport Public Schools. The Newburyport Public Schools are committed to the intellectual, physical, social development engagement of every student. Within a culture of high expectations for individual and group learning, our students experience rigorous academic challenge, are intellectually curious and express themselves creatively. Our students enhance their well-being by applying knowledge and skills about nutrition, fitness, and healthy behaviors. Our schools are inclusive and supportive community. As part of this community, our students demonstrate values of personal integrity, sensitivity, and social responsibility. Our schools partner with parents and community in significant ways to help achieve this mission. Members of our school community, teachers, parents, staff, and administration, support this mission every day, in every classroom, on every field of play, and in every activity. This brings us to our next item on our agenda, is a period of public comment. It is an opportunity for anyone to be heard by the school committee. Public comment is not conversational, but rather an opportunity for you to make a statement. If you wish to provide a comment, please raise your hand to be recognized. Join us at the table and begin by stating your name and address. Please try to keep your statement to about two minutes. Are there any public comments at this time? Thank you. Hearing none. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. Mr. Keown, do we have warrants this evening?
Yes, we do. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $265,125.05 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. No conflicts with the mayor.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
President?
President.
Warrant passes?
We have another one. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $6,090.88 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. No conflicts.
Are you to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now I would direct your attention to the minutes of the spoke meeting of Monday, March 19, 2012, for approval. Do I hear a motion?
To move.
Second. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes carried. Alex Bradley is not here this evening, so we're going to skip that part of, or does, did you have a message from Alex?
Of course, I have a message from Alex.
Okay.
I don't know, but I got a text, it was official, it was, it was on your honor.
Did you really? Okay.
Did Alex get a hearing?
I wondered that myself, but I don't know. He raised about 1,800 or something like that.
Well, messaging, they have a collection. To put them over, to put that class over there too, so Alex can get it here. Alex is, Alex is a diligent student, and he has an exceptional amount of work, and it's horrible letting him stay up past 2:00 in the morning, so he, he's going to do his homework. I hope Mr. Parent heard that.
All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is the use of the facilities at Fuller Field on Sundays. You have a proposal before you from the Newburyport Junior Clippers Special Olympics. They are requesting the use of the Fuller Field on Sundays, April 15 through June 10, 2012, for the purpose of practice for the team between the hours of 5:00 and 6:00 p.m.
I move that we vote to approve the use of the Fuller Field track on Sunday, April 15, for June 10, 2012, at 5:00, 6:00 p.m. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're into item number eight, which is the budget presentation. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kerbel and Assistant Superintendent Barron.
Okay. Thank you. Well, it's that, it's that time again. And I'll just give you a little bit of history. The last month, we've had budget presentations by each of our principals, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask them to come a little bit closer. Our principals are here in the audience. And so you've had a chance to listen to their, their need, and you had a chance to listen to their ideas. And so what I like to do, along with, we presented the school budget. So we have, each of you have a copy of the presentation, there's copies of the budget for the audience. Thanks to Mrs. Kennedy and the faculty. And let's see how this works. Whether we can get a copy of the conference, we need to go into present. Everything is, everything is. So, first of all, I want to thank the principals for being here. I think that budget development is not easy, and usually it's, budget development comes with great discussion. And so, I, I put, you're going to recognize some of the slides, because they look a lot like last year. So the format will be similar. So I'll just, I'll just start in that. I will say, you know, I will say, if you want to be a great district, then you have to have the programs, and you have to have the assets, and the resources, and the things that you need for our kids to be successful, and for our kids to have opportunities. And so, I would like to say, in fact, I'll tell you. When I'm presenting tonight, if we're able to cover the shortfall, then I think that we can start moving really forward the way we need to. We talked about being good, we talked about being great, we talked about good to great, and great to greater. If you want to be great, then you have to have what we need in this district. It's plain and simple, not going to sugarcoat it. And it's really, really difficult, you know, to talk about being a great district, and then have to come before you and say we have to cut half of the dollars. And, cut half of the dollars, even though we got more money than we got last year. So, I'm going to talk about that. I'm going to talk about what our core values are, what we believe in, and what we struggle with. We know what we want for our kids, we know what we believe in. We want them to reach their potential, all of them. We want kids at the high school to be able to take the electives that they can take. We want them to be able to take foreign language at the middle school. So we know what our core values are, we know what we believe in, and we struggle with trying to fund that. Very simple. And that, I was very, very proud of our principals, because they did a much better job than the, being able to explain what they believed in and what they need. And they talked about it like that. And so, having the budget presentations at each school allows you to feel the same thing I feel, because of right now. I know, I, you know what I'm struggling with, because you're going to struggle with it too. And only that, when I say I, I don't mean I, I mean Angela, Karen, Deirdre, okay, and our principals, and our assistant principals. So, I'm going to go through the presentation with Deirdre. Okay, we'll talk about enrollments, how we're trying to maintain, what the revenue expenses are, the shortfall, and what our reductions are, and if we got more money, what will we restore? So, as you heard during the budget presentation from each of our principals, they're trying to prepare students for the 21st century. They were already into it, okay, but we, but we have to be, we have to be current. We have to prepare our students for jobs that aren't even available yet, or even created yet. So, our vision for Newburyport, we must give students the opportunities they need at the high school, middle school, and at the elementary. You heard, for example, Lorraine Mox talk about the reading program at the middle school. You've heard Barry talk about robotics at the, I'm sorry, at the Arena View, at the bowling school. Barry talking about robotics at the middle school, okay? And Mike talking about how he wants to experience electric at the high school. On one hand, we gave to you, I thought a reasonable budget wasn't a laundry list of value-added items. Just a way to maintain effort in our schools. What I want to do is, first begin by looking at the enrollment. Okay, and so if you look at enrollment, there are two areas and a shade. Ones in second grade and ones in fifth grade. The principal, Christina Davis, would like to have nine sections of grade two, rather than, rather than eighth. In grade five, you see that there is a difference in enrollment of 37 students. And so, one of the things that we have to consider is, can you, when you look at the budget, when you maintain the class sizes, to lower class sizes and still have the kinds of things that we want in our district. I'm just going to give you another 10 seconds to take a look at the projected enrollment differences across the school system. So we found grade, we found, grade two is a 23, 23 more students. Okay, I already mentioned about grade five. So, I just want to talk a little bit about maintenance of effort. And so I put a question out next to level services, next to our initiatives, and next to programs. The initial budget, when we took a look at what we needed, was well over a million dollars. I think it was 1.3 billion, somewhere around there. 1.3 million dollars, 1.4 million, okay? And so, we go, so there's a shortfall. And so we still have level services to an extent. Looking at our initiatives, and so, can we maintain our initiatives? The new teacher evaluation system, okay, is coming, it has to be implemented in September. The common core, our teachers need to address the common core starting now. All right, we continue with our literacy and math initiatives. You know the kinds of work we're doing in the area of science? Barry presented the special education budget, he talked about the kinds of changes that we need to do in order to continue our inclusion effort. Angela talked about the data teams. Thank goodness we have ENF who have, who has been focusing and funding our technology efforts in our district. Keeping kids in the, awareness in and out of district, it's okay. And so therefore, you're going to see in our budget that we're going to hire a teacher at the middle school. Okay, and for those that came in a little bit late, we had about an hour presentation of the city council and school committee, it's about joint ed meeting, all about place-based education. And I put down a question by next to restoring key programs. I mentioned about high school and middle school, the programs we want to restore. So let's take a look at our revenue, and I'm going to ask Deirdre, speaking of revenue sources, and then speaking of our expenses.
Sure. The first revenue item that we have is city appropriation. You can see for the FY12 fiscal year, the actual was $21,902,865. The FY13 projected at this time is up 3%, or $647,572. The next revenue source that we have is choice tuitions. These are students that are here in our district under the school choice program, that we educate non-resident students, and we receive $5,000 for each of those students. If any one of those students has special education services, we receive 100% of the cost of these special education services from the sending district. Additionally, choice tuitions, we are entering into a program with a firm called Educatus. And Educatus will place students from Europe that apply here to Newburyport and pay the per pupil cost. And so we've budgeted five of those students in choice tuitions as well. Circuit breaker is the special education reimbursement program for high-cost students. The statutory reimbursement rate is at 75%. Since it was enacted and passed into legislation, it has never been 75%. It was as low as 40 its first year, to 50% its first year, and has been as high as 72%. Athletic receipts are receipts that are gained, and fees, gate fees, for participation in the athletic program at the high school. That has been level funded. Transportation fees, we charge transportation fees for non-mandated transportation services. And we bumped that up about $10,000 based on our experience and our revenue collections that we had this year. Student activities fees are level funded, those are fees for high school students participating in student club and activities. Kindergarten revolving is the revolving account that collects and holds on to our kindergarten tuition for full-day kindergarten. Preschool revolving is the same for preschool as is for kindergarten. It holds the tuitions in our preschool revolving accounts. Now if you notice on that line in itself, it's zero for FY12, and we've moved the money into the budget for FY13. That is nothing more than an accounting change. It was off books last year, and now we're bringing it into the budget presentation. If you'll recall, we did the same thing last year for full-day kindergarten tuitions, so let's do the same thing for preschool. Federal stimulus monies are carried at zero to, I don't want to say remind you that we've lost them, but they were significant monies to the district under the Federal Stimulus Act, the ARA Act. And so there are no longer any federal stimulus monies available to the district and/or to the city. Education jobs grant, it was funded for two years, this is, it's last year FY12. We were losing, we are losing that funding for FY13 as well. That was some additional federal monies that came out the year before last. Choice fund balance is money remaining in school choice tuition accounts that we're using to fund our operating budget. It's one-time monies that do not get replaced each year, and that they, that's funding our operating budget at $400,000 this year. So for a total change in revenue of $843,072, or 3.44%. Yes.
I have a couple of questions. So, in relation to, is that in fact budget, not actual?
In some cases, it's actual for city appropriation. It's budget for school choice, because we get that four times during the year, and you're doing your revenue forecasts as you're moving forward from that perspective. Circuit breaker is a budget estimate.
It would be helpful if we could identify which are which on this thing, because for example, you have federal stimulus. You say we've lost all federal stimulus monies for next year's budget, and this year we had some, and you have zero here, federal stimulus. So, when I try to go through it and match where we're reducing versus the revenues or the income that we had last year, it's not clear to me.
Okay.
Do you understand what my difficulty is with it?
Okay, so an additional column called FY12 actual?
Well, that's what you have it here, called actual right now. I don't know, or you know, they're mostly actuals, but a couple are budget.
Exactly.
An asterisk on the ones that are budget, so we know which is which.
Federal stimulus, you know, a couple of years, so it's.
So why do you need to carry it?
Well, I think we wanted to show.
The ending of it.
And then this year, right?
It did, but Ed Jobs was here, and that was a part of a stimulus, a secondary stimulus. I left it in, but I certainly can take it out.
Okay, no, I just, I have to ask you what you're talking about. All right.
You're welcome. Dan?
Could you just tell me what that percentage was on circuit breaker again? I mean, I know it's a 57% increase, but what was the percentage of reimbursement that you were hoping to get this year?
Hoping to get about 60% this year.
And so that number's based on a 60%?
Correct. That number is based on 60%, and that number is also based on what Nick was just saying. That 175 is not an actual, we're going to be getting more money. I mentioned that at the last school committee meeting when we got our audit, that finally indicated how much money we would be receiving. So I used those two factors in generating that budget estimate.
Is there any way to sell, how much money do we have in the bank right now?
Yes, I think so. One of the things that we do at the finance subcommittee meeting, certainly we do month-end closings each month that update the general ledger and all our financial reports. And then at each quarter, you receive a quarterly report that goes through the entire forecasting process of all of the monies in the bank forecasted through June 30th. So that we can figure out where we are. We froze the budget early in October because we had some unbudgeted costs in the area of special education. We get through the heating season, we get through the winter season, we forecast that, that fourth quarter based on third quarter actuals, and that comes into play when we do take a look at all of these revenue forecasts as well.
Right, so then it's money left in the bank at the end of the year considered revenue?
Money left at the bank at the end of the year in your revolving accounts are allowed to revolve from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year. Monies left in the LEA budget, the Local Education Agency budget, revert back to the city on June 30th. We do calculate teachers' summer salaries on June 30th that are encumbered as of June 30th, committed in funding, but are paid over the summer for teachers' summer salaries, which is an actual in most school districts, in all school districts.
Yeah, just on the, on the revenue sources here, and I assume it also doesn't show up on the expenses. We've had a conversation, we've had more conversation this year than we have in previous years, but we've always talked about trying to capture those expenses that really go into operating the school. You know, the field trips are paid for by the PTOs, and, you know, the crazy curriculum stuff. And I don't see that here, and I know that we're moving in the direction of being able to record that out, both on the revenue side and on the expense side, so that what we're actually, you know, we're actually suggesting that it's going to cost us X amount of dollars here to operate our schools, but we're really not giving the complete picture of what it operates to cost, you know, what it would cost to operate a school. And we're not really giving the complete picture of the revenue. And I just, you know, I say that every year, and hopefully, you know, maybe next year. Jerusalem Shalzah, next year when we get to Jerusalem, things are going to be great. The sheet's going to reflect what it actually costs to run the schools, because I think the community needs to understand that so much, so much enrichment is.
We can answer that at the Brown School, questioning, super deadly. I'm going to look at how we could put together a chart to show that, that is different with this one. Like I expected, people have that.
We could have that, we could review that for people 24. I'm not quite sure that it belongs on this page, because this is revenue sources, and you have the expenses against it. However, I think we give a total picture of what it really costs to run the system, between grants and everything else.
That's one of the appendix pages that we're putting together as we speak, that talk about what grants we rewarded this year, what grants we anticipate awarding next year, and what their, their source of expenses are against those grants. Certainly sliding it behind us is a supplement to it.
Yeah, and I think that's a piece of it, but the other side is the expense side. What are we actually spending on field trips and the third grade?
We have it included on both. I think that the idea that we talked about was having the supplemental revenue sources and then the total cost, the cost of walking to school. Because really, when you take a look at these funds that we're doing here, we are underfunded our schools. And we're reaching out and finding ways to make things work. But those are not areas that are directly within our control and we can effectively make. So there's a big risk in adding that high percentage of our programs to Pentagon funding outside the LEA.
Well, I think maybe bring up a good point. Squeezy fund, for example. I saw the breakdowns in what gap money pays. And thank goodness, we have this, we have this group. It's all the help pay the professional consultant. And it's just, and I think that should be captured.
Technology from the NEF. I think the people at Newburyport expect our schools to be equipped with adequate technology. And they know that this is being paid for by an outside source. This is the story that we need to get out to the community as much as we can. Because I think it talks to the stewardship that we have within the school district, keeping an eye on taxpayer money, but also finding what's good, what we need to do. So we'll take this beyond that.
Next page is the expense page. It is broken down by what's referred to as class center, but by school or site. Each site has a comparative FY twelve to FY thirteen, a change and a percentage. Just as in the revenue area, we brought in preschool tuitions into revolving. Into the Brown School site budget for FY thirteen, we brought in the expenses as well. They were not reflected in FY twelve, and so that's why you see that jump. The budget as far as its total increase is concerned is up five point three-five percent. I'll turn it back over to Mark, unless there are any questions on that. Dan?
Real quick, we pulled in two hundred and thirty thousand preschool revolving.
Tuition money.
Tuition money, along with another twenty thousand. Twenty-five thousand kindergarten increase, right?
As far as revenue is concerned, yes.
Right, right.
Yes.
And we're setting that against a four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar increase.
That's correct.
It's been explained to me once. Did we pick up a salary or something in that school?
When you, when Amy Sullivan presented the vision for the new preschool program for next year, which had more of an extended day aspect to it, when you voted that, that increased professional teacher salary costs, some of which are going to be covered by the preschool tuitions, but not all. Because they are tuitioning in students that are regular education students, not special education students who are also in the program.
I remember making that vote and I remember thinking we were looking at a cost of like twenty-five thousand, I thought, at that time.
From the previous year's model.
Right.
After revenue.
What percentage of the five point three-five increase in staff salaries?
I don't have it off the top of my head. Let me get that for you. Thank you. You're welcome. But it's going to be, it's going to be a number in force, in my way of thinking. Because we were flat in a lot of areas and reduced utilities too. But let me get a power chart kind of breaks all that down for you. Hold on.
Before I move forward, I just, excuse me. You guys said a couple of weeks ago, I want to thank Kathy Manning for bringing up the PowerPoint presentation, sending a pink card for Kathy so that we could get our work done and she gets, make sure we all look good. So what I thought would be important is to show you increases in new staff. And we're going to be reducing, or showing some type of reduction, but this, these staff members are included in the budget. So, and Deidre and Angela, if I miss speaking, make sure you say something. So at the high school, the principal is going to add a special education teacher and that teacher will be working with students who are at the eighteen- and twenty-two-year-old bracket. So students who have graduated from high school, who will stay on. And Mike has done is he's funded that position by reducing three instructional assistants. At the middle school, there was a potential of three students who were going to be going out of district placement. And Karen worked with Barry and decided to try to keep those students in the district and therefore hire a special education teacher. Take a look at the Brown School. There was instruction of, there was one point two FTEs for new students. You can see needed a point four registered nurse and point eight ADA instructional assistants. Amy would like to increase existing staff a point nine. During the summertime, there's no secretarial help and there's a tremendous amount of activity at the Brown School with parents of preschool and kindergarten students, so an increase. So there is time to look over the summer. And also, because of the change in program at the Brown School, there's an increase overall of the one point oh. So, and looking at the district, you see new teaching staff with two point nine and IE and support with two point four FTE. I think that's very, very reasonable. Only that is, I have my hands off to the principals and Karen Brand for keeping the plateau on special education costs. Projected FY revenue than expenses. So Deidre talked about the revenue was at three point four-four percent. Wanted to thank Mayor Holliday for, at least at this point in time, the city appropriations was doubled, in terms of percentage-wise, the change was double from last year. So I appreciate that, Mayor Holliday. That helps. Think looking at expenses, I think five point three-five percent. I've worked on thirteen budgets. I think that's very, very reasonable. However, the shortfall, it's four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty. There's a shortfall. Now, considering the shortfall, Deidre at one time was nine hundred thousand dollars. Then that number came down to six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We started making cuts based upon six hundred and sixty dollars, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars shortfall. So what did we do? How did we address the shortfall? I do want to mention the work of the principals, working with their staff, and then working with Angela and Karen, working with Deidre. Then principals, then with central office, review the budget, and we all came together and worked on how to address the shortfall. And David, would you mind going over this slide, taking the next slide? Okay?
Sure, yeah, no problem. This is a handout packet that will talk to these slides here. Oh, thank you. So principals and central office met to take a look at the gap and how we were going to handle the gap by preparing a reduction list. The handout that you have right now has the first page, which is the difference between revenue and expenses. And the next three pages are the reduction lists and the reduction items by site that total what you have here on this PowerPoint slide here. So the Brown School, the spreadsheet reflects seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars in reductions. The Resnerhan spreadsheet includes sixty-two thousand, six seventy-five in reductions. Mullen School, ninety-four thousand, one one eight. The middle school, one eighty-four, one hundred and eighty-four thousand. High school, one forty-two, three nineteen. And central office, nineteen thousand, five hundred. You'll see a note under central office. Because I do the budget, when I see budget reductions, I take them on the fly. So I've denotated two of those reductions that I took. And that's how we continued going from the one point three down to the six sixty, et cetera. So that's why they're indented in that column. The third page shows the grand total of these reductions that were discussed at the administrative level, five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Our current shortfall is five sixty-seven, two twenty-two. That means we have a remaining balance, it's in the black, of fifty-three thousand, two fifty. Now, on the left-hand side of that page is a note. And that note says, this is based on receiving three percent in city appropriation. The other revenues that have been presented in the revenue sources are solid revenues. The very last page to this packet is the FTEs that are on the reduction lists. Principals and administrators met last week, understanding how we were getting closer, closer, closer to the gap and understanding the gap money, decided to focus on FTEs, classroom teachers, as far as what we would want to take a look at possibly restoring. So this is a list of all of the FTE reductions in the district for next year.
One of the things I do want to mention, that these budget reductions are not prioritized. And what we did was to list them, Steinwood Elementary moved up to the high school. In terms of current positions, which affect people, if we move in this direction, there's a grade five teacher maybe, that's definitely a Mayflower position. And a technically graded position, which would affect somebody. So those are current positions. It says foreign language, that would be two foreign language teachers.
Excuse me, Mark. That's the foreign language program that hasn't started yet. Not even getting on.
So that's why.
I can press something that doesn't exist.
It's a good point. That's why we put down current positions versus the other, which is more value-added. Take a look at the revenue source. And this would, right now we get down to city appropriation, a similar format we did last year. Could be any revenue source. If a revenue source increased, then what would be restored? And take a look at the restorations, if the appropriations are increased. Put the positions up there, positions aren't necessarily in order. They're in order up there by, Steinwood Elementary going all the way up to System One. And one of the things that we decided to do was to gauge school committee in discussion about the cuts and about any restorations. The principals, the senior logists, administrators and I are meeting on Thursday to take your feedback and think this to some more. And get ready for the public hearing, which is Tuesday, April twenty-fourth. And this is going to be one of the biggest.
At this point, other any questions? Mr. Eon?
Does it mean we know what two percent salaries, which is on some total number, a two percent increase? Is this, is it, where are we at in the budget, Mr. Eon?
Last year, FY thirteen.
One, two, two.
Two, one, two.
Two, one, two.
Could I ask on this positions page, are, are there any retirements reflected in the budget anywhere?
Yes, the retirements are taken up, retirement salaries are automatically taken out of the budget.
And how many do we have?
Three. One at the elementary, one at the high school. I'm sorry, you have two, but a third secretly buyback in this fiscal year, who have they elected? So you get to one elementary, one high school.
So does that come into play with this second grade FTE at all? That's a non-existing position at this point? Because this is in, we want to go from eight sections to nine sections?
Correct.
Oh, good.
Yes. We currently have nine sections in first grade, eight in second, and eight in third. And the second grade enrollment is projected to increase for this coming school year. So I want to increase second grade by a section. If I increase and have nine, then we'll have an average class size of twenty. And if we are unable to increase at the second grade level, I will have an average class size of twenty-two.
I'm sorry. Nick, you being up?
Yes, I do.
I'm very sorry. I'm looking at my own budget.
I'm still, I'm trying to formulate my own, my own thoughts, eh?
Me too.
I see this and I understand why the superintendent on the second slide say, what do we struggle with? Because all of this is a struggle. I do want to commend the staff from putting together a budget that has brought us as close as we have. And I guess that makes it that much more frustrating because we are so close. I do have concerns that yet again, we may not be able to start the foreign language program. program in the middle school, that I think has also proven, we don't do it, and we don't even afford it. I'm concerned, especially after the site visitations that we had on the loss of the tech integrator at the Mullen and Knott. Particularly because Assistant Superintendent Mick opened my eyes to how much training is actually done by the tech integrators in terms of the use of technology in classrooms. And that's, I think, a very, very dangerous cut. But in terms of, I know you haven't prioritized yet, but if you want some feedback, that's one that I worry is in terms of its repercussions it could have going forward, because it will keep us from applying some of the technologies that we want to apply.
As you mentioned, for that position, there was a plan. There was a plan to help teachers with technology. So... I want you to continue.
No, no.
But I do think that some explanation, because I know you've discussed all of this with your administrative team, and that there are rationales behind each one of these increases in restoration. And if we can't increase, conversation has gone on as to what we would do instead. So I don't know if you want to go into that part of it now, or continue just with questions, because, do you want to share some of the ideas for the tech integrator?
Well, I would say we can look at, look at it from a teacher's point of view. You have to ask, you have to have access to somebody that can help you move to the next level. And is, and it's either somebody who's dedicated to, that's the person's total job, such as the tech integrator, or a fellow colleague that has advanced skills, is possibly given a stipend, will be available, so would be more like a peer-to-peer type support. So we would look at working with our teachers you know, in terms of funding, a number of stipends, you could give to teachers, who would work with other teachers in the area of technology. In terms of overall planning development, Nick, I would say still in development. I don't want to put any of our principals on the spot, okay? But this is what was talked about during that whole budget meeting.
And might there be, would that technology teacher leader then be able to be, what is the cost of having that teacher available to coach each and teach, we could get substitutes and a lot of other things going beyond just the stipend? So I think, well, it's a commendable plan, I think, it's a good opportunity. But I also worry about, we have these pockets of excellence, but they too need to go and extend and grow, and who is working with them? Whereas when you have, one person who's focused on the integration of technology throughout the curriculum, they have time not only to go to MasQ, but also read e-school news every day, and whatever else they need to do to stay abreast of their skills and bring new ideas into the schools.
Well, that's why we struggle. That's why we struggle, hold on. But one of the things that was discussed was the student teacher's capacity to read, would get very enthusiastic. So if you're going to make one decision, you have to be, you have to try to be positive, inspired about another decision.
Yeah.
Okay? So that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to look at this positively, to say, "Okay, if we have to do this, we're going to look at another opportunity."
I agree, I think it's a good direction to go in. Still with Robert, as you obviously said, the tech integrator funded, so we could do that way, get to that. If all of these represent that kind of interesting opportunities that might not be the best thing, still represent an opportunity, of course. The other area that I would raise a concern about is the high school. We have talked about it, we've heard about it in public comment, on an ongoing basis. We need those traditional teachers to just give the students the flexibility that they need to complete a, you know, a good curriculum, the core subjects, but also get the electives that will engage in learning and be lifelong learners. And, you know, this is truly limiting, not to mention the effect it has on our schedule, so I think it's been discussed time and back again, I don't need to do it, I just raise it as a personal concern.
Nick, last year, we had to reduce the budget by five hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, something like that. Okay? And this year, once again, we had to reduce, all right? But we're not really, we're not reducing right from level service. But we're still reducing four hundred nineteen thousand dollars per person up. So we're getting closer, we're close. See, it's painful to look at, you know, a one point two FTE at the high school, and that's eighty thousand dollars, right? I think that, not everybody agrees with me, but I think that the middle school, if you're looking at a baseline salary of fifty-five, it's a hundred and ten plus nineteen thousand dollars for materials. Okay? But if you look at, you need to hire a little bit masters plus five, which would bring that cost down if we hired someone that's a little bit less expensive, a little less experienced. So even if that's ninety thousand, okay, and the FTE at the high school is eighty, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So right there, you'd be able to put these positions back.
Any other questions?
I have some questions, I, for talking about it, but at this point, but I do have some questions. And either Lieutenant Curvo, or maybe my parent can tell me. Can you walk me through the high school reductions in terms of how many sections of elective? How many electives does that mean that you're not doing the quality? So in other words, a point four FTE is two sections, it's two sections?
Every point two is a section.
Every point two is a section, so that's two...
And can you define a section?
That's a semester course.
For twenty students?
Anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five students.
So that's essentially six electives serving, each elective serving twenty...
Six elective sections. And again, as we've talked about in, you know, our meetings, I'm kind of doing a guessing game, where I think the FTEs would get plugged in until we actually go to hang them over April vacation and run our schedule. Then I'll have some solid figures and numbers of where students and where the teachers are needed. This was my best guesstimate as where I thought staff would need to be placed within the different departments.
Is your sense, again, if it's okay, if I could just ask Mike, is your sense that these electives would be additional sections of electives we're currently teaching, or would they try to be new electives that we had in place?
Both.
Bruce, these, this is, the breakdown, these are not current staff members.
No, I understand that, I understand. Yeah, no, I understand that, you know, that there were two current staff people on this list, and the rest are, what I, in hindsight, in retrospect, I'm really sorry, I used to call it value-add, I was there quoting that phrase, because it's not value-add, it's our basic core of education.
Right.
And I think I spent several years, it's misguided impression that it is adding value to the system. It does do that, but yes. You know, I guess Mike, obviously, I really appreciated the way we have gone through the budget process this year. I really appreciated the effort to communicate on behalf of the principals, the effort on behalf of the principals to communicate what it is we need, what do we need? And I know that that was a really big, big piece of this. And then sort of walking back from what we really need, I think, to do the job. So I, you know, again, it's disappointing to see another budget, you know, we're still chasing that five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand that disappeared seven years ago. Seven hundred and fifty thousand added to what you want to do, give us back, you know, I bring it to seven fifty because that restores world languages at the middle school, not just at one grade. And, you know, the, I appreciate seeing world language here, and I think the only one in the room, I would give a short talk, because this is how it feels to me. When I was a kid growing up, going to high school, I'd listen to the news really early in the morning, I'd get up, and the Long Island Railroad used to have a train, it was the six, Dr. Orlando might remember this, the six fifty-five Babylon to Brooklyn. And they would schedule that train every day, and every day they would cancel that train. That train was canceled for six hundred and forty consecutive days. But they scheduled it every day, and there were, and it got to the point where when they would read the news, they would just say, "And the Phantom's not running today," they used to call it the Phantom. So I feel that way, in a very sad way, about foreign languages. It doesn't look like the Phantom could run this year. You know, we schedule it every year, we try to put it back in, and here's that six fifty-five Babylon to Brooklyn, that we put in every year because we say, "We need that train." And it ain't running this year. It's not going to run this year unless we can find some way to address this shortfall. And that just is deeply saddening to me. You know, it's saddening to me that at a time when we're, when the world is becoming so much more complex, and so much more interesting, that we can't bump up electives in our high school to reflect that, you know, that, that, that teaching kids what their community is about, face-based education, that we're just, we're hat in hand trying to make those things happen. So my admiration for your administrative team at the central office and at the principals, and their staff. Like, this is just another one of those, you know, just get to that, you know, cut some corners, just get to that, I really feel that sense that you have, maybe we could shave a little here, if we could just get a little more, we could do some significant things. And putting these things in place really would be very, would be terrific, and maybe what we need to be doing. I think I made the speech shorter this year than I have in previous years, but...
Thank you, Bruce. I just want to mention that, as we look at the non-teaching items, for example, I know that, Angel and I had a conversation today about how important Lucy Clarkin's reading materials were to the Mullen staff, and to what the Remax wanted to accomplish. So then Angel said, "Well, maybe there's a, we're looking at a grant source for that." And when you look at the middle school robotics, I know that that's an MDF proposal, so just, you know, just looking at any, any way to find some of the equivalent materials.
Mr. Eamon?
Yeah, I'd just like to say for the record that I think the high school has taken a little bit of a disproportionate hit on this, that it had a relatively modest increase to handle. And I am glad, I didn't realize this though, but the FTEs were losing current classes. But we're still struggling with our nine ninety, and I recognize that the impact of this isn't, isn't going to make Mike's job any easier. And I would also like, I mentioned earlier about Brown, and is, can anybody tell me that if we didn't vote for that preschool four-day pre-k, that we wouldn't be in this problem right now? I mean, am I wrong? And, or can somebody explain to me why we're not, why that's not the case?
Amy?
Oh, Amy, not here, head of the room.
I was looking to give her, actually.
Okay. So your preschool program expenses are four hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, and you're bringing in two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of revenue? So your revenue is covering fifty-two percent of that cost to run preschool program that you voted on two months ago to move forward.
So, what, for our preschool costs last year?
Preschool costs last year for salaries, not expenses and things like that, were three hundred and ninety, nine twenty-five.
And they were covered by how much intuition?
One seventy-three, one fifty-five.
So it's still...
But forty-four percent of your revenue covered your expenses last year, and fifty-two percent of your revenue is going to cover your costs this year.
Okay, so that we are actually in vantage shape...
Yeah.
...because of that. That's what I needed somebody to explain. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy Alvey?
Thank you. I would also like to commend the principals for, I thought, those wonderful budget presentations, really good information. I think as chair of the school committee, I have a better understanding of the school budget than I ever have before, because we typically get the LEA and then all the other add-ons. And now we've been working to come to much greater integration of the budget, and I think that was really helpful, to hear from you, to hear from your councils, to hear from other teachers you brought, and, you know, really walk through the budget in terms of your needs. And it's encouraging to see that some of those needs are here, not all, not some of the things that we really had hoped to achieve. But I think that, you know, again, we're getting closer to where we, where we need to be. I think that as a school committee, we made decisions around staff salaries, overputting, you know, as Debra said, it's close to four percent of that increase is staff salaries. That was a decision that was made by the school, to fund the staff salaries, and that that's how we can't do all this. And so those are decisions that we have to watch as we go forward and start teacher negotiations again, is, you know, where are we in terms of salaries, and where are we as we begin to look at being able to put these putbacks? You know, maintaining quality personnel is essential in our schools. We had a lot of conversation about that, and being able to provide the kinds of funding that we want our teachers and administrators to have. But we also made, you know, some choices. And now, here we are, with all of that added up, and in front of us, this is what we...
You know, we're not here because of things. I watched seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars disappear from the school system seven years ago. It's more than just what we negotiated with the teachers to get a three-year deal. It's the fact that that money disappeared, our state support, and every year, this is the window. And whether, you know, whether it's one percent raise, or two percent raise, or three percent, you know, whatever it is, it's always the same window that we're really grappling with, because something really was taken out of our school system that had been there, and we're, you know, we're circling this hole that has existed for seven years. So yes, that's a piece of it, but, you know, it's not, I don't believe, no reason that we are, you know...
You also need to understand that on the city side, it's a 1% increase, less than 1% increase in the budget. So, you know, and this is a significant increase. And that typically does not happen in terms of when we're doing the budget. And we are, I think the one thing that, that saved us this year was the health insurance. And the PEC group did an amazing job of working on insurance issues, issuing R Q, reviewing all different types of proposals, completing the analysis of the G I C. Information meetings, I believe, are happening this week. And then the vote will be on the 13th for them to accept the recommended changes by the PEC, which really will help us in terms of, you know, a very slight increase in our health insurance over what we had originally projected, which was, again, another double-digit increase. And we don't anticipate that to happen. And that in itself also was a way to get to that extra $100,000 that we didn't have initially when we first started looking at the school budget, that I shifted over here. And I certainly could have done something else on the school side, on the city side with that money.
Mr. Paul.
Sure. I would, I, I agree with the consensus that I think what we've tried to do this year in going over the budget, going to the different sites, hearing what's needed, seeing what's needed, has been helpful. But I'll also say it helps to have more time. It helps to look at realistic revenues and expenses in advance as much as possible. It's helpful to hear from principals when they get together and essentially try to figure out what they can either give up or share or compromise on in terms of ultimately what the budget's going to look like. But back on March 21st, we had a meeting at the Knott and Mullen School. And one of the things we talked about that night was foreign language. And I asked a question of Principal Hopping about how important foreign language is. And he answered it quite truthfully. And I know he's talked about it since and that it's very important. And he'll probably tell you, he'd probably tell you person to person that, "What do you think? I'm crazy? Of course I want foreign language at the Knott Middle School." But really, in this whole process, I'll be quite honest with you. The people I really want to hear from are the parents, the kids. Because I did do my homework since that night of March 21st. Because I really didn't have all the facts that I wanted about foreign language. Such as what the goals of the program would be. Would it be introductory, exploratory, academic? Would it be a program that allows students to test into Level Two the language at the high school? Would it be graded? How much time would be allocated to it? How many languages would be offered? How would we decide what language we're going to be offered? And I can go on and on about that. But I think it's really important, whether it be for a thing like foreign language or whether it be for the courses that are essentially not going to happen at the high school. I think it's important that we hear from, from people. Because, no offense to anyone at this desk, but we're kind of like talking heads right now. We're talking about money that disappeared a number of years ago. And it's not available to us. So we're trying to get close, but we're not there yet. And frankly, I want to hear from the people. I want to hear what people want. And I want, I would encourage any impetus from the public as to, you know, what we really can, can we do something better as a, as a school committee for the school district? Because, you know, I'm not happy being just close. I think we can do more. And I, I think maybe, you know, questions need to be asked is, what really can we do for, for our school district in really reaching for what we want in terms of quality education for the children in the city?
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Can we fire the discussion? I'd like, I'd like to bring us back then to the budget reduction personnel page. And I guess I would address those questions to Mr. Parent and Dr. Corville. We do have the issue of 990 hours before us. And if I'm, if I remember correctly, Mr. Parent, at the last school committee meeting, you, you quoted us a percentage of how many students have already reached 990. Could you refresh my memory with that?
32%.
And so I'm looking at this figure at the high school of $133,319. If you took out the L P N position, that brings you down significantly. I guess my question to this room is, in adding these four positions, and I realize they're not cast in concrete because students are still choosing what, what they, they are. How much closer does this, do these items get us to 990?
I think this question was asked of me when I presented my budget.
Right.
Here in this room a couple of weeks ago. Really, the elective choices at this time, unless we have a change in policy, will not affect 990 unless students opt to take a full schedule with no study halls. I have a committee right now that's looking at a flex schedule alternative to what we're doing now, where we would have school open longer during the day, possibly into the evenings, and also looking at summer programs and weekend programs. But this, I, I didn't present the added FTEs to address the 990 issue per se. I was looking to add more classes, hoping that more students would take advantage of taking seven periods each semester as opposed to seven periods one semester, six periods another with a study hall. And just to give kids more, more options and choices. You know, I didn't touch the music at this time. I'm leaving that off the plate, so to speak. So my, my, my point for music is still in the budget with this reduction. However, again, until Mike Test and I, and we go down to X2, first three days of April vacation, I really don't know where I'm going to reallocate or allocate my resources as far as personnel yet. I will know in the next two weeks.
Now, second question. Does, does this budget reflect anything that we are anticipating for the NEASC accreditation? I guess what I'm asking is, are we in jeopardy with any of these cuts at the high school?
No, the, the thing that we were in jeopardy with, with NEASC was the cut last year when I cut an administrator and a secretary. I got into some hot water with NEASC because I didn't report it right away. But as far, as far as this, as far, as far as NEASC is concerned, I don't believe that will have neither a negative nor a positive impact on the NEASC's visit. I've built in an additional $4,000 to $5,000 in NEASC monies this year because next year we have to print all of our, all of our reports. So that reflects the stipends to the two gentlemen who are chairing the NEASC and the printing cost. Next year, when I, when we're in front of you a year from now, I'll be coming to you for $35,000 to $40,000 extra money needed for us to actually do our site visit in 2013. We're already planning that with booking hotel rooms and all the other things that you have to provide for when the NEASC committee comes in October of 2013 for their visit.
So we're okay from the last time they visited and made recommendations to us and moving forward?
We're not in a better position. I lost 7.2 positions the year before I came on board, and I got two back. So I'm really 5.2 teaching positions short from where we were in 2003 when they last visited. And I'm one position short in administration and one position short in administrative assistance at the high school. So we are not in better position. Then the only place we're in better position is we added back a .55 assistant in the library. That, that's where we've really added, added back. But we're short, from where we were 10 years ago, we're short in all areas.
Thank you. I have one more question about... I know on the increases in FTE and new staff. And I understand that we need a 1.0 in the middle school to cover special education. But what cost is, or cost savings is being realized by keeping those students in the district?
This is, here's, well, the potential cost. My thought, Karen Brand about this. I think the tuition range, I want to say $45,000 each. And then there's a transportation cost that could be, I want to say $18,000 to $20,000. So, um, let's see, $35,000, $155,000?
And these are students that are currently at the middle school?
Yes.
So...
Yes and no. There's some at the Mullen right now that are coming forward.
That are coming up.
Yes.
But, but what I'm looking at, is it fair to say then that, that, you know, that FTE, although it's an increase, we would be paying those out of district tuitions anyway? So this reflects a cost savings rather than an increase? Is that fair to say?
Yes. Ballpark estimates, you're saving probably close to $100,000 by keeping these students in district. And that, that allows for the cost of the teacher. Teachers currently not on staff, that would be a new hire.
The other, the other thing I'm looking at, and I guess this is back to Mr. Parent, and I'm really sorry, but I'm on the same page.
It's okay.
Um, we're, we're, you know, you're talking about increasing a 1.0. And it's my understanding that that is to work with our 18 to 22-year-olds?
Mm-hmm. Currently this year, we have one student. And we got a waiver from, to allow that student to be in the Cold Twenties program as an 18 to 22-year-old. Next year, we'll be up to four or five students. That waiver would not apply anymore because of the number of students. So again, it's either taking these students and putting them, you know, into outside placements at that age group. Or, again, good work with Karen Brand and Bob Clark, looking at the three IAs positions that were coming up from the middle school to the high school, and assimilating that into a special education teacher's salary so that we could run that program in-house. And really, there is no actual cost increase by adding that position because we're cutting the three IAs on the other end.
That was my point, thank you. So, so that isn't a full FTE increase either?
No.
You know, and I understand that, you know, the rest of them are, for, for very good reason. But I, I just wanted to get a little clarity on those other two. Any other questions? And I'm, I'm just going to go back and for, for a minute, reflect some of the things that, that the committee has asked for. And these would be requests from us. A new budget sheet to be generated that would include all the other revenue sources we have in the school district that are not part of the local education budget. And we've listed most of them. They're including but not excluding Swayze grants we have. But the total allocation from the N E F this year and what that went to, allocations from each of the budget sites, the P T Os, how much money they donated or given to the schools for, for things like field trips or cultural events or whatever. Because I think all of us as members of the school committee would, would like to see almost a pie chart of how much is the L E A and how much all these other things integrate into our budget that, that give us a true picture of what the cost is of running the district. Is that, do you think we could have that by the next time we meet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before we meet, so we can regurgitate it or whatever?
Yes, actually, yes. It's a different process entirely.
Cheryl, do you want, one of the things that has been brought into the mix is the after-school programming at the middle school that's happened this year. Do you want, do you want an accounting, because it's been pay-as-you-go, everything we've offered, do you want an accounting of how much money we've taken in at the middle school to allow these programs to happen? We can get that for you as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think part of that is that it's great that we're taking the money in. It's important for the community to hear that that program is happening and what it's doing with kids. As part of, as part of understanding what the schools are providing.
I just think it's really, I applaud your, your request for the outside funding sources and what it's actually allowing us to do in the schools. Because that's sort of like a hidden number that just flies under the radar. But without it, we wouldn't be able to do the stuff we're doing, so, okay.
And, and we're realizing that as well. And I think it is important to get that out into the community, how many sources we use as revenue in our own community. Dr. Corville?
Deidre had mentioned that we made the list of reductions. And we, we, we all received a amount of $53,000. So if you look at the reduction section, the budget reduction on personnel. I didn't know if the student wanted to weigh in on restoration. We, we rolled these four, you see the equipment, supplies, all of the personnel.
There's plenty of choice.
So I didn't know if you wanted to, if the student would like to weigh in on priorities. Because we will do this, we will spend the time prioritizing. I'd like the student to weigh in.
I'll say high school electives. I think any weekends, I think we all were hoping we could be a little better placed this year. We've made some good gains, but we're not there yet. But I think, given that accreditation is happening next year, and, I mean, I think our priority should be to use whatever balance we have to add to more FTEs for the high school electives.
Mr. Ken?
I would agree with Mayor 100%. Like I said before, I believe that the cuts, I believe that the high school has gotten a disproportionate share of cuts, not only this year or last year, but in recent years. I would agree, I, I'd like to see electives continue to be funded at the high school.
But can I ask a safety question that are on the high school? Could someone explain to me the need for an additional 1.0 L P N? Is that health and safety? Is that students moving into the high school that have other needs? Is, is it a new position?
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a combination of those things. You know, I, I've been asking Lorna to keep records of how many visits she's having in a month, in a month of March. She saw 851 students. Plus, we have students in our, currently in our building who have significant medical and health needs. We're also going to be taking students in at the eighth grade, but especially at the seventh grade two years from now, that have some significant medical issues. So this was, rather than adding another RN, this was looking at a more cost-effective way of adding another person at the high school to assist Lorna. But also to allow, you know, if, if there's a medical emergency, Lorna being by herself, she's all we got in a lot of cases. And so it, it, it's, you know, I met with Beverly Heinz-Lacy and with Lorna when the budget was being developed. We felt, you know, we looked at Andover High School, which went the L P N route, for adding another staff member in their health office. And we thought that was the most cost-effective way to go. But as I said last year, you know, I, I put an administrator and a secretary on the block before I would put teachers on the block. And I'm, I'm going to stay with that credo that I, that I still passionately believe in. And I'm, I'm gonna stay with that credo that I, that I still passionately believe in, you know, cutting staff, you know, in the classroom is, is my last resort.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Dr. Perman, I guess the question on the table is, what, what would be the priority given this page of budgets? And Mayor Holliday, just for clarification, did you include the, the 1.0 LPN in your endorsement for the high school positions?
No.
No? I, I, I just didn't, I, I'm looking at budget figures in front of me, and Deidre, you're much better than me at this. If we took the LPN out of the other four positions, we would be saving fifty-three-nine-fourty-one?
So, thirty thousand dollars for the LPN.
So that would reduce the...
So, are these FTEs, were they gonna come from current staff though?
Yes.
Okay, so we...
It's not, it's not adding, it's not adding another person.
Instituting one or two, it is possible to institute a couple of them, but not all of them.
This was adding to my current staff that are not full-time.
Right.
You know, what you don't see there is a point-two Spanish and then a point, point-three or four-point music, which I've been able to try to keep, kind of as, as an insurance policy for the high school. Again, student data will drive where those teachers are needed, you know, in our new schedule for next year when we run the numbers.
If I had to make a suggestion, then I would certainly suggest high school, science, social studies, English, then wellness, then...
So you're rank ordering within this, these five options?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Collier?
Yeah, I mean, just for the purpose of discussion, and again, I, I think that this sudden request to rank order these really merits to hear more from the people's community, you know, what they want for the schools. You know, I'd like to have everything here. And, but I really, what I'd rather have is to hear what the people have to say. Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I, I would like to have a little bit more time to think about this. And I guess my only comment would be, in light of, in light of the assembly that we attended to look at the results of youth risk survey, particularly at the high school, because that's what was presented. I would think that there's a very compelling case to be made for wellness as being a priority there, given the results of the surveys. But, but I'm not making that case now. I really want a chance to really think this through. And I really want to hear more from the principals over the next couple of weeks. And I'm equally interested in what the community priorities are. And I hope that we will hear that between now and the 24th and on the 22nd.
One more question, just for clarity. Lauren, I think this is to you. I understand that the restoration or the addition of the, the grade two would give us a class size. What, what is the current fifth grade class size and what would this addition do to your class sizes?
The current grade five is large, so those classes are on average twenty-five students. Some are, some are a little larger depending. The class coming of the fourth grade class is approximately twenty students per class. So, and there are eight sections. If we cut a section in fifth grade and went down to seven sections, class size would be about twenty-two.
And if you capped it?
About twenty.
So same, same?
Right.
Okay. All right, I think we move on. This, thank you everybody for your work. And I, and I, somebody said it. I really do think that the budget process this year with the site visits and taking the time to do each building separately, and actually being in the site to understand the needs did a great deal for us. And, and I really appreciate all the work that, you know, the administrative team has done. And I, I know you've spent hours and hours and hours, and I just want to thank you for your devotion to the students and new reports. Thank you. Public comment? Does anybody have a, something they would like to share with us? Dr. Orlando, could you step forward? Can you keep it to two minutes?
Just give me the accent on top. I have a hard time looking at the clock. I'll, I just want to say Bohica, and Mr. Menard can tell you what that means at the executive session. I've said here many times, it's not about teachers, but it is about teachers because it's how they affect students. You folks on this committee need to be challenged to go through and look at this budget line item by line item because you should not allow any teachers to be reduced. A couple of observations from the data I received tonight you ought to take with a heavy hand and take a look at. The first thing is what you alluded to in the Brown. There's been a significant increase in the amount of expenses there. You need to make sure that what you voted in last time is actually funding itself because you're now facing a significant shortfall. There was a four-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-dollar increase at the Brown. And that comes pretty close to the four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar shortfall that you have. Grade two, you're losing, you're increasing twenty-three students there according to the data that I looked at. You know, you need another second grade teacher. You're dropping thirty-seven at grade five. What am I trying to say about that? You can't have a good school district with good teachers where you just add and drop students at the school student numbers. Just because thirty-seven students are no longer in fifth grade doesn't mean you dropkick one of the fifth grade teachers just because there's no one. The other thing, I think that I've, I said before, you really have to look hard and fast at other novel ways to make this all work. What does that mean? Take a look at some of the programs, some of the classes, some of whatever there is out there, and see where that may not affect many students. And those are the things you take away because you can't continually take away students, I'm sorry, teachers from programs that are essential. This district will have no teachers in a few years because nobody's gonna want to come here when they see people added and subtracted at the whim of numbers of students in classes. You can't do that. So the challenge to you is to go back, not ask the school folks to do their job, but to you to do your job and take a look at line item by line item, what's in the budget that you think is staring you in the face is to take a bigger look at, where are the big increases, and what you think might be able to go away that hasn't been mentioned here.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Larry? Could you state your name and your address? I forgot that part for Dr. Orlando.
Yes, it's already clear from the staff. I would just like to basically endorse what Dr. Orlando said, that as you look at the details of each of the budgets, the programs, I would suggest that you do request a little more data from, from the administration, particularly in terms of high school classes and numbers of sections. I know that was something I requested last year and I did receive, but I think it's very helpful and enlightening. I think I did forward some of my analysis to you at the time. And I think it's very important to look at that because I keep hearing about children at the high school not able to get into classes that they want. And I do think that, I think maybe the core problem there is the schedule, which is what Mr. Parent's group is looking at. But I just think it's really important to do some planning and figure out whether you do need to make some changes to the way the electives are offered before you just give them money without understanding where it's gonna go. Especially at the cost of a large second grade class. I tell them, I mean, I'm an interested student, but I think large second grade classes are a lot of rate.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Ms. Larry? I'm Miss Fienen. My apologies, but for some reason I didn't make a note of who approved the minutes. Mayor and who seconded?
Did you, Mr. DuCanto?
Consensus is that.
We'll put him down anyway. Are you waving at me?
Yeah, I just want to say one last thing. Several people have shouted out from the audience, so I'll, I'll do it as well. You know, and I want to reiterate what Mr. Cold said. This is, year after year, I've said this. You don't leave yourself enough time to go through this now in a very critical enough manner to make any constructive suggestions. You're almost in the mid, you're almost to May. This cannot continue. You've got to do this earlier so that you give yourself some leeway to make the right judgments. Instead of rushing down in eleventh hour saying, ax this, do this, do that.
Most public comment, John. I, I, I'll say something, but...
I close the public comment.
Good idea.
Oh, Ken, okay. So, we've been, we've been working on budget a long time. And we did this year, we had tours of schools, followed by each school having its own budget session, except for the Knox Mall, they were together, back-to-back. An opportunity for the school committee members to look at every line item. If you want to look at the G2s, as Deidre calls them, in other words, how people put their, you know, the back of the envelope together so they can figure out what they need for supplies, you can have that. So you had an opportunity to look at each school's budget in detail. The only problem, and I, I sort of disagree with Dr. Rose's comments about starting early. When we started earlier, and Mayor Holliday talked about this at one of the meetings, you don't get all of the revenue sources. At one time, we were at, we were cutting like nine-hundred-thousand dollars, and we were, we were like beside ourselves. Deidre said, think more, think more like, you know, half a million. And we were like, oh, okay. Imagine that, like, have a relief that we'd be cutting how many half a million versus nine-hundred thousand? So, in the last three weeks, how many times, Deidre, you don't answer this, has this changed? It kept changing daily, so, you know. And, and that's, and that's why it's taken so long, because the revenue sources keeps coming in. And the mayor was supposed to speak to this. Another week and a half, or two weeks probably, we'll have a final minutes, if this is not the final number. So she's still working on things at the city. And so, if we could start earlier, okay, but the revenue dictates where we'll be.
We're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is an MSBA update. And we have Ms. Farrell, and we have Mayor Holliday, and we have Mr. Keon, who would like to...
I'll be, I have a slide for you.
Show that.
For you that I hope is helpful. I shared it with the finance subcommittee. That's for you. If anyone else is staring.
Well, I got a little bit of trouble here.
So, I've handed you out a sheet that I wanted to walk you through. I presented it to the finance subcommittee on Friday. And I wanted to basically start to communicate out the percentage of reimbursement, sorry, for the Brezlin Hand New Models School Project. Now that the MSBA board has approved our grant, is going to fund the grant, and here is how it works, basically. Think of this spreadsheet as a left-hand story and then a right-hand story, and I did that the wrong way. Sorry. One side and the other side. So under the first two columns, we have MSBA reimbursement rate calculation. This is how the calculation is done. Every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a base rate that you start from. Every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has an income factor. Newbury Report says four-point-four-two. Every community in the Commonwealth has a property wealth factor. Those three numbers are forty-four-point-two-six percent. And that is the subtotal of reimbursements before going after the incentives that we went after. The incentives that we went after were maintenance. You could get up to two percent of incentive points for the preventive maintenance program that you have currently existing in your district. So if you can show to MSBA that you are maintaining your buildings regardless of how old these buildings are, if you can prove to them that you're maintaining them at a level, you can get up to two percent. The statewide average is one-point-four for those districts that receive it. Some districts apply for it and do not receive it. So that reflects the good work that we do in our facilities as far as upkeep is concerned. Energy-efficient green school, you get two percent, percentage points for energy-efficient green school. And that's an all or none. Either you meet their high watermark as far as energy efficiency and get two percent, or you fall short and you get zero. The East Fairhaven Model School that was built got the two percent. Newbury Report is also getting the two percent. And because we're in the model school program, we're getting five percentage points additional reimbursement. So our incentive points earned were eight-point-five-two percent. You add the two together for a total reimbursement of fifty-two-point-seven-eight percent. Now, when I've provided you these MSBA updates at school committee, and when we talk at the school building committee meetings, we talk about MSBA's participation in our building project. And what participation means is grant funding. They will participate in grant funding. But they're not participating in everything regarding the total construction costs of this project. And that's why we continue to update on participation. So on the other side, we talk about the new Brezlin Hand project costs and grant calculation. The MSBA board voted the total project cost of thirty-eight million, eight-eighteen-two-oh-four. They take out what they will not participate in. And those are less excluded scope costs of a little over four million dollars. Additionally, your project is going to include contingency. It's gonna include design contingency, and it's going to include construction contingency. So they subtract that out first before they calculate what your grant's going to be. So total project cost, less those two items, is the initial basis for grant of thirty-three million, two-seventy-five-forty. The reimbursement on that basis is seventeen million, five-sixty-one-ninety-one. The contingencies that are budgeted are going to be used. All of them, some of them, you're going to run into a need, either from a design perspective or a construction perspective, to apply to MSBA to utilize the grant contingency and have them participate in funding it. If we use every last cent of that contingency of one-point-four-seven-six million, and we received fifty-two-point-seven-eight percent on all of it, that's an additional grant of seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-three-sixty-seven to the city. So that would be a total reimbursement of eighteen million, three... So that would be a total reimbursement of eighteen million, three three nine, five five eight, on a total project cost of thirty-eight point eight million, or forty-seven percent net reimbursement after you take out the exclusion, excluded costs. And that's where we get the two disparity, if you will, of getting reimbursed fifty-two point seven eight percent, but when you take out the excluded costs, your real in or net reimbursement is forty-seven percent. I mean, forty-seven percent. So I thought it important to present that to you as far as how that's calculated and why the two numbers that have recently been talked about, what they are and why they are and what they consist of.
Deidre, there's a, there's an assumption that there are costs that they're not going to cover. I know that we went in and bargained with them about possibly cover. What kinds of things additionally later on, as we were trying to do our negotiations, did we try to get them to cover that they said they weren't going to cover?
Um, they would, they cap a lot of things. For example, they cap architect fees at a certain percentage of construction. I believe it's at eight percent. If your A and E fees, your architect fees, go over, they'll cap it, and so that's included, for example, in some of that four million dollars. Some of that four million dollars might be site costs to hook up to utility, sewer, gas, those kinds of things. But I don't believe that at this juncture, because the MSBA board has voted and has reviewed that submittal that we sent, that they will change any of that.
I, I, I was asking about what, what were the kinds of things? You sat down and said, "Come on, give us, give us..."
Oh, preschool furniture, FFNE, tied to the utility, because, you know, they're, what are we going to do? Not tie it to the, you know, water, sewer, electric? And they're more like, "Well, we didn't pick the site." So it's a... Demolition. They won't cover swing space. And the Knox-Mullen, they're probably not going to cover anything in the auditorium except for ADD, A, DA, I almost said ADD, but ADA, because they're not sold at a middle school program, needs an auditorium. So these kinds of regulatory changes...
So that is pooled out.
It's definitely, yeah.
We get more space.
So, but it's those kinds of costs, and I can get a detailed list to you as to what they all are, because there's backup to it once we received our packet.
So is the raising of the Bresnahan not, or included or not included?
The raising of the Bresnahan is included.
Included.
Yes. Included, and they will participate in it.
But there were debates about that, and initially we were looking at it as a renovation. I hear it was real concerns about what they would participate in. Now we don't have to worry about that.
So that's the update as far as that is concerned. We also had a fabulous event the other evening, Thursday night, over at Michael's with the kickoff. I attended the first coffee yesterday in the South End at J. I. Nene's house, where a neighborhood came together to hear about the projects. That was well-attended, and I'm driving around with all these boards now in the backseat of my car. In regard... In regards to the Knox-Mullen renovations and additions, at the last school building committee meeting, we received the base bid and alternative bid numbers. And the subcommittee of the school building committee that consisted of people in the industry like Tom Jones, Sarah Holden, John O'Connell, are going to be meeting to rake through those base bids, see what's actually in them, understand that scope, take a look at the alternatives, understand what possibilities we have, and to really try to turn that around to be able to recommend to the school building committee what needs to happen following week to try to get the next submittal to MSBA the week of school vacation. So that's turning around fairly quickly as well.
Well, and working as quickly as we can to get far and hard numbers, I mean, for all three projects. I mean, we know we're at thirty-eight eight for, you know, the new rez, we're at six seven for the senior community center, and we're just trying to figure out this last number. And then looking at, with our bond council and First Southwest, looking at, you know, what are the kinds of interest rates we can get on the projects? And then, you know, looking at twenty, twenty-five years and trying to make the numbers work for, you know, the numbers that we had projected to the community, and that's where we are. So we should have all of that ready to go within two weeks. And last Monday, last Tuesday night, the city council voted affirmatively to support the special election as well as the three-dollar process. Looking forward, June fifth, sixty-something days. Sixty-four days in county.
What did you say, that they voted unanimously? Not just affirmatively, but unanimously supported.
Dr. Murray?
I, I think this is terrific, very helpful, Deidre, and, and make, put this, does this make sense through on the website?
Absolutely. Website, I think, Deidre and I need to sit down and make it easily digestible, but some personal bits of information.
We can regurgitate.
Well, I know, because, because again, I mean, last week, obviously, right after the vote, I was concerned about the article in the local paper, because it dropped to that forty-seven for that piece of it, but that wasn't the rate that was approved. So it was, you know, it is a very complex process. So I think this helps to clarify, you know, how the funding formula is established. So, thank you, Deidre, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. I'm going to bring us to our last agenda item and quickly get an update on subcommittee reports. There is no executive session this evening. No. So I'd like to start with, let's, I'm going to go in order, joint ad, Ms. McCarthy.
Joint ad met tonight, and I'm pleased to announce that the budget finance committee, subcommittee of the city council, has approved Place Based Education, twenty-five thousand dollars. So hopefully that will be on our next agenda, voted out formally by the whole council. And we had several items on our agenda we did not get to, unfortunately, but we're going to keep pressing on that, and the next meeting will be in May. First council, or first school committee meeting in May, at five thirty.
Superintendent's goals, Mayor Holliday.
Really don't have a lot of updates at this point on that. The next step was that we, as a group, had asked Dr. Kerbel, who has been diligently working on the budget, but to come up with some of those action objectives, goals. So we're waiting on that, and hopefully we'll have that sometime in the next several weeks so that we can, once we get beyond budget piece, and we can take some time and take a look at that, to give us some sort of framework about how to complete the evaluation process as we approach June.
Thank you. Policy, Mr. Bennett.
We had a meeting that did not get posted, so we have continued to work and looking at all of our policies. I think individually, we have really taken a look at them, and I, if I can only speak for myself, because again, we have a meeting, formal meeting, but it was clear to me in reviewing our school committee policies that virtually every policy I need to be changed or updated. Every single policy had something in it that reflected the state of the art eight years ago when we first did it. So that and the mission statement is, is that we're going to be tackling it expeditiously. And then, we also did, we also, I mean, I think each of us are sort of set, coming up with a list of policies that don't exist, that we probably never would have thought of seven years ago, but we need to make statements on it. So, so we have our work cut out for us.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Cole.
Sure. We started out going over a couple transfers. One was with respect to a resignation of a specialist at one of the schools, and transferring that salary adding to expense, as well as doing some site-to-site transfers for some monies that were coming from the art, music, and technology budgets. We also talked extensively about the reimbursement rate that Assistant Superintendent Farrell presented earlier, asking a lot of questions, going over all the different numerical factors in that, understanding better what things like FFNE, furniture, facilities, and equipment stand for.
Fixtures.
Fixtures, sorry.
These would be a little too big for that.
Yeah, yeah. Check my hand scratch there. We also went over any updates in the revenue and expense report that has since been updated since that time, and talked about other things related to, again, talked about the preliminary reduction list at the time, and engaged in discussion about how that would affect things like nine ninety, and then also talked about short-term solutions with respect to the space issues at the Knox and Mullen that were mentioned on March twenty-first. That was that.
Thank you. Communications, Mr. Decanter.
Yes, I reported out of our last meeting that, about our meeting that we had that day, which is basically looking at how we approach our home, what presence. There are a couple of things that I also should let you, committee, there's a whole, one is that, as Deidre mentioned, we've started now the process of doing neighborhood and interest group coffees or meetings of different sorts to help the community understand scope and needs of the various facilities projects that we have, working with the rest of them a lot. We probably will end up having anywhere between thirty and fifty or more coffees between now and the time of the election, which is slightly more than Deidre can handle on the road.
Oh, I, I, I...
So as much as Deidre is a wonderful spokesman, or the mayor is a wonderful spokesman, for the high school, we had about forty coffees, and that's what I basically said. So, we will need to enlist school committee members as well to help carry the message to people around you, contacting you all by email to ask you to get me your availability. Coffees are typically held in the evenings during the week or Saturday mornings, that can be very productive as well. So those are the times that we're looking for people. Please let us know. We will then get your names and information over to the person who is meeting all our schedules, Mr. Sullivan, and we will be able to move forward from that. You will have a kit to work off of, which will include all of the graphics that you needed, PowerPoint presentation, if you choose to work off a PowerPoint presentation wherever you feel comfortable with. And if any of you would like to have coaching along those lines, we would be glad to provide you with that as well. So just be aware that that's going down the bike from the building committee, subcommittee on communication.
Well, that was the wrong committee. Can't talk about that now.
It's part of, it's the integration.
Right. Right. And there are an awful lot of people that are up there working already. I also attended the kickoff at Michael's Harborside, and it was heartwarming to see how many people were in that room and were revved up. If you, if you have a Facebook account, there's a great picture of all of us, you know, on Facebook that, you know, if you, if you post it, then you repost it, and someone else sees it, it grows exponentially. So, you know, that was a wonderful evening, and, you know, well-deserved. The, Mr. Decanter, do you have any update from the EBC?
Yes, I do.
Go right ahead.
The EBC at our last meeting, last, what's that it was? I think it was a very important meeting. We elected a new president for the EBC, for the board chair, and that is, I think, all we will be pleased to hear is Pat Simkins, who is somebody who's been very involved with our schools forever. She's also a businessperson, runs Run Line, boat yard, or boat sales, and she, I think, will be a loyalist addition to the EBC. Heather Hanson, who has been doing outreach for us, and made significant progress, working in various school levels, so we'll talk about that as well. The EBC is kind of getting ready to figure out how to expand the initial interest that we've had from businesses even further down, moving forward, so things are really very nice to back in that area.
What was Beth's last name?
I'm sorry?
Beth's last name?
Simkins. Also, the EBC board voted a motion of appreciation for building, and has been chairing it for the past few years.
NEF updates. We were all absent from the last NEF meeting because we were on the budget road, so we do have a meeting this Wednesday evening, the board of directors. But as you know, the, the NEF is a tremendous fundraising source for our district, and, you know, they continue to roll out new things for us to take a look at, and so it's kind of an exciting place to be. One more thing I'd just like to, to say, Mr. Decanter had approached me about looking into the space requirements or lack thereof of the middle school. And the suggestion was made that we formally request that the superintendent form a space committee team to take a look at options for special education classes as well as, you know, use of space, and is there anything else you want to say?
Yeah, no, I think, I think we saw one over there on the board, that special education is already in less than ideal circumstances. The other issue that came up, should we begin to bring back foreign languages, where would we put those? And, you know, you start to put all of that together with the, you know, the space that we're currently using for central offices, and so it raised, opened a whole lot of questions. Is that the right place to keep the central office? Do we need the space for the schools, or how else can we address the school space? I think it's a long-term issue, and I think if we don't begin to address it now, it's going to come back, I assume, later, so I think that should be...
Mr. Bennett?
The only thing I would add to that is that, that it is the Knox and the Mullen that we need to look at that. We just talked about it in terms of being the Knox, but actually, it is the Knox and the Mullen.
Yes, it is.
The law campus.
So you accept that request? Absolutely. All right, and we have, Dr. Kerbel.
I, I, I want to, I want to recognize Sean Bloom, who was, who received an award at the Assets Award, known by the Ekin Coalition. There's a number of people, but I just want to recognize Sean, and Sean received an award for, I think, I want to say it's for promoting a caring and positive climate. And also, I just want to say that if anyone had a chance to see the play Beauty and the Beast, hats off to all of the kids who were super, and Mike Perillo and Kristen Quinn and Jamie Salkowski for their work in putting on this unbelievable play. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?